All right. I call to order the special meeting of the Green Bay Common Council for September 24th, 2020. Clerk?
All twelve are present, Your Honor.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands. Divisionable with liberty and justice for all.
Onto the agenda.
Move to.
I would like to switch the two items if I could. So I'd like to make a motion to move two to before one.
There a second?
Second.
This is motion made by Alder Brunet, seconded by Alder. F2 before F1. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay? You guys have it. The agenda has been amended. Entertain a motion to adopt the amended.
Motion to adopt as amended.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Gerlach, to adopt the agenda as amended. Any comments? Seeing none, all in favor.
I. Even the agenda change?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay? The ayes have it. We don't have anything under resolution, so we can move along to F. Committee of the whole, so that brings us to F2. So on this item, before we get into the discussion, we just ask Ms. Jeffries to give a brief overview of what this $522,000 will be used for.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a second application to the Center for Tech and Civic Life for us to acquire equipment that would provide lasting change to our elections. You do have this in your packet. This is also publicly available in the packet. We did want to put some additional money in for staffing to ensure that we have appropriate collection at our drop boxes. There's a lot of equipment that Clerk Teskey has really been needing, quite frankly, for many years. Signs, voting booths, locking supply carriers, which are essentially cages in which the voting equipment would be locked inside a locked room, laptops and printers, and also tablets. This would expedite and really verify both the registration process, that's what the laptops and printers are for, as well as the tablets are for, I didn't see tablets here, tablets are, the tablets are in this. Tablets are to help the greeters, and a greeter is a job at each polling ward, which is a person who essentially greets the voter and just makes sure that the voter is in the right place. And so it's an address lookup. And so the tablets would help to facilitate that address lookup. Also some hand carts to move some of the equipment around. And the other piece, two pieces of equipment are lift trucks. And these lift trucks are needed in order to facilitate the equipment going inside a cage, the cage then being lifted to the polling location, and then installed a locked cage inside a locked room. For the benefit of the council as well as the community, our voting equipment is dropped off the day before Election Day for obvious reasons, since Election Day begins at 7:00 and the poll workers come to the polling places at 6:00 a.m. And as I said, there's a small piece of this $522,200, which is set aside to ensure facilitation of Dropbox collection.
Thank you, Ms. Jeffries. Questions or comments on the item?
Mayor, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Alder.
Ms. Jeffries, is this the, in addition to the money that we had already applied and accepted?
Yes, it is.
So originally, was it a little over a million dollars?
Yes, it was, the original request was $1,093,000. We received an additional $10,000 as a planning grant, so $1,103,000. And then this $522,200 is in addition to that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments from Alders?
I, go ahead. I was just gonna make a motion to open the floor if there are members of the public interested, but I can wait until Alder Johnson speaks.
Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one question, probably again, I presume, for Chief of Staff, Jeffries. Was this a competitive grant, or was it offered to a wider pool, or was it only offered to previous grant recipients?
I believe this was offered to a wider pool of people, but I do not have verification of that. We were informed because we were recipient.
Okay, thank you.
Brunet, do you want to make your motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to open the floor to interested parties.
Second.
Motion made by Brunet, seconded by Sturier to open the floor. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay? The ayes have it. The floor is open. We have members of the public.
So please unmute yourself and state your, oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just saying, if there are members of public, just state your name and address before speaking.
Hi, this is Randy Griswold. I'm with Ted Fritch, Neighborhood Association, on the west side of Green Bay. I have a question with regard to.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, you need to provide your exact address?
Oh, I'm sorry, 1041 Village Green Court in the city of Green Bay.
Thank you.
Just speaking as kind of a novice on this whole thing, can you tell me what the intent of the grant really is in a sentence or two? What are you really trying to achieve with this grant?
Yes, we are trying to achieve safe voting in the middle of a pandemic. That is the aim of the grant.
Is it just for the city of Green Bay, or is it countywide?
This is just for the city of Green Bay. There are other communities that have received the money, but inside Brown County, we are the only one.
Do we have any evidence that unsafe voting conditions would exist during this pandemic? Is there any scientific evidence to say that, or is it basically speculation?
Well, I am not a scientist, but certainly we have a pandemic, and we know how the virus is communicated. And voting is a social endeavor, and so we want to assure that people can vote safely, either vote safely on Election Day, or vote safely and knowledgeably absentee by mail, or absentee in person.
Would the monies and resources be equally applied citywide to all residents, or all voting residents of the city, or is it specifically designated to underserved?
It is for every person who is eligible to vote.
So.
Mr. Griswold, Mr. Griswold, just want to make sure that your, excuse me, just want to make sure that your comments are directed specifically to F2, which is the $522,000 additional grant that we have applied for, and we're seeking.
Well, I just want to make sure that money that's being requested, that it's going to be allocated equitably across all the voting districts of the city.
So a lot of the equipment that Clerk Teskey, to Mayor Genrick's point, a lot of the equipment Clerk Teskey required is to go at every ward in every polling location.
All right, thank you, that answers that.
Thank you, Ms., any other questions or comments from the public? Entertain a motion to close the floor.
Motion to close the floor.
Second.
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 Made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Scanell to close the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay? The floor is closed. Any other comments from Alders?
Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, just a reminder to press your button, I'm not always great about identifying that, but it's easier for me to see that instead of chiming in. So I think I had Alder LaFave and then Alder Johnson.
Yes, Alder LaFave here, Mayor and Council. To answer that gentleman's question, I think that this is the head with this, because we're pretty sure all the experts are predicting in November it's gonna get worse because we have the flu season coming in. And I've already talked to somebody who told, and had the flu already. So if we have a combination, people getting the flu, and if they get the virus, those people are going to be very sick, and hospitals could be overrun. So I think this is very, very important that we accept this grant. I think we're grateful that we are getting this grant at this time. Any money that, we need a lot of this to help to make sure that we have a safe voting environment for everybody. Thank you.
Alder, Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I have for Chief of Staff Jeffries. In the grant application, there were laid out very specific requests. From my review of it, I think all of those were the purchase of tangible technological items that could obviously be used for, I mean, well beyond just this election. Those pieces that were outlined within the grant application, are we committed with this grant to purchase those things, or is there flexibility for us to deviate from that list at all?
So yes, Alder Johnson, there is flexibility to deviate from the second list as well as the first list. There is a process by which I undergo, and that is to get approval from the grantors to reallocate funds. But it is the expectation that we would move forward with our plans as originally outlined, should this equipment be available.
Okay, so recognizing that, obviously sometimes things can change, especially with how fluid this situation is, from the time that maybe you submit an application to the time that we're taking it up. From your perspective, have any of our needs changed from the time that this was submitted until now? Meaning, like that you outlined in that grant, do you anticipate trying to change any of that at this point?
So for the second, the additional grant funds, our needs have not changed from the time this was submitted to now, for the second grant.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other comments?
I have a question, old mayor. I'm sorry, I didn't press my button. You can ignore me if someone else is.
No, there's no one else in the queue, so go ahead, Alder Brunet.
Okay, thank you. I guess the question for Chief of Staff Jeffries, if the needs change, and we as a city to reallocate some of the funds for different categories, in other words, not purchase the equipment outlined in the agenda item, who makes that call to allocate the funds? Is that something that has to go to the full city council, or is that an administrative level?
And I would just jump, I would just jump in here to say that if, you know, we're making any alterations that are substantially dissimilar from what's included in our application, we would certainly bring that to council.
Thank you, Mayor. My only question.
Any others? All right, do we have a motion to?
I don't think so. Move to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Alder LaFave to approve. Any final comments? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay? The ayes have it. The item has been approved. Onto F1, to award contract 3277 Presidential Election Voter Outreach Campaign to KW2 HVS in the amount of $150,000.
Move to approve.
Motion made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Dorf for approval. Are there comments, questions here?
I do, Mayor.
Yes, Alder Brunet.
Yes, thank you. I was wondering if Mr. Winters could go through the process of this bid, RFP proposal, just as an outline, and if I have other questions, I'll ask them after he's done.
Very good. Mr. Winters?
So this was a RFP.
Motion to open the floor.
He's staff.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This was an RFP that was brought to me by Chief Jeffries. She assisted, or I assisted her in writing the RFP, at which point, once it was written, we put it out through our bid distribution network. It reaches several different parties who would be interested in participating. We had the bid, or we had the RFP out on the street for two weeks, which gave them ample time to review, ask questions, and prepare their proposal. We received, as you can see from the summary, we received two different proposals back. One was the one that we're requesting to award to, and the other was from another vendor who did not necessarily meet all the requirements that we were looking for, which is what you can see, is why you can see that the difference in scores. From there, we assembled a contract based on the RFP and the proposal's response to the RFP, and now we're here looking for approval.
Notice that the scoring for the price between the two bids came out exactly the same. Did we, did we offer that $150,000 as a price, or did they just miraculously have the same amount?
So we offered, we offered up the budget was $150,000. You can actually see that the winning proposer here that we're looking to award to actually did come in slightly higher, only because they came in $50 less. So we have a formula that works by the lowest bidder gets the full points, and then there's a formula that it allocates points out there based on the bid, the total that somebody were to propose above the lowest.
Okay, Mr. Winters, this might not be a question for you, but other staff, but I'll ask it all the same. Is, are these funds allocated from the previous grant that we approved, or is this coming from city tax levy dollars?
I'll answer that question. This is from the $1,093,000 that we have already accepted from the Center for Tech and Civic Life.
Okay, is there, was there any coordination? Because obviously, there have been four other municipalities in the state of Wisconsin, and also receiving Milwaukee and Madison. Was there any coordination with those municipalities in this preparing our bid? In other words, do you know if the other municipalities approved bids to the same company?
There was no coordination.
No, I'm not aware of this company doing similar work, but it's a possibility. We don't have that knowledge.
This company has done work for the Wisconsin Elections Commission, though.
Right, that's the Madison-based organization, or the local one, that's, from what I understand, kind of a subcontractor on the bid?
Neither. The Wisconsin Elections Commission is a state agency that manages elections for the state of Wisconsin.
No, I know that, Ms. Jeffries, what I meant by that, the company that received the bid, I think it's KW, whatever it is, what I'm asking is if they, they've done work for the Wisconsin Elections Commission, is that what you meant?
Correct.
Okay. I do have no other questions at the point right now, but I want to make comments before we vote on it. Thank you.
Alder, any other questions or comments? I do not have anybody else in the queue here, so Alder Brunet, for a second time.
I, okay.
I do.
Go ahead.
I do have my button in, unless you're still going, Alder Brunet.
Yeah, I can, I can make my question, I remember it in the comments, if you don't mind, Alder. From what I understand, reading the contract that will be awarded, there's some language in there about analytics, like this public relations firm will be targeting voters, from what I understand, or looking for certain demographics of voters. Could you speak to what that is exactly, what that will gain, how much money of this bid will go towards that component of the bid?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what you're asking, Alder. Can you clarify?
So a public relations firm will promote our election, so people know where to vote, and how to register, and polling location changes, and all the things that I think most of us, if not all of us, would agree is a very good and valid thing for the city of Green Bay to do, especially in a pandemic. What I'm asking is, I'm very concerned about keeping any special interests, any partisanship, any steering of voters away from our election. And what I'm, I guess what I'm asking is if, if part of this money that we're approving through the city of Green Bay will be used to encourage voters to participate in the election, which is a good thing, how are we making sure that everyone, every voter is treated the same way, that certain voters are not rise to the level of importance? And is analytics and data analysis being used to target certain voters?
If I can just, I don't want to put somebody on the spot here, but I do see that Mr. Hutchinson from HBS, who is the partner. I'm not sure if he would want to answer your question or not, or if he's even prepared to, but if he's able to, I would, I would welcome him to speak to that question.
Motion to open the floor.
Second.
Second.
Made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Brunet to open the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay? The floor is open. Mr. Hutchinson?
Hello, this is Sam Hutchinson from HBS Advertising Marketing. I'm representing today also for KW2, who happened to have a conflict and they couldn't hop on the Zoom today. But to answer the question, I know that our charge is to reach every, all voters in the city of Green Bay equally. And that's, that's all that we'll be attempting to do with the outreach that we're doing. We aren't targeting any specific groups.
Okay, Mr. Hutchinson, thank you. But I guess the question is, how will you determine that? Just mailing lists, media that goes throughout all markets to all people, or will you engage in, you know, Google or Facebook-type analytics to target certain voters?
Well, any targeting that we would do would be to try to get as many Green Bay voters as possible.
That's understood, but that can be accomplished through, you know, the media, whether it be written, social media, printer, or radio, you name it, traditional media. But what I'm asking is, will you engage in analytics, you know, targeted voter lists who search for certain voters that might not be reached by traditional media? Because I'm not leading, I'm just asking a simple question. I'm not making a judgment right now, I just want to know the answer.
Well, I don't think we've got it down to the granular as to, as to exactly how we're going to do the outreach, other than to know that it's to try to gather as many eligible voters in Green Bay as possible.
But the use of analytics is possible.
That's not my area of expertise, but I'm sure you can, you can do things with analytics. But all I know is that our charge is to reach as many eligible voters in Green Bay, in Green Bay as possible.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. No questions for him, Mayor.
Any other questions for Mr. Hutchinson?
Mayor, I pressed my button, but it might not be working.
Yeah, it doesn't look.
Darn. Yes, Sam, hello. So, going through this, my understanding was, we're going to be analyzed based on what is the best form of media to reach people. For some people, that's the written word, postcards, et cetera, that was mentioned. For other people, it's social media. For some people, it's television. For some people, it's radio. They mentioned a lot of radio stations. And so my understanding of the analytics piece was analyzing what types of communication, where it says right in here, relate the, that they will facilitate, you will facilitate the flow of accurate information from the city of Green Bay, as well as other trusted partners and Wisconsin election officials. And these relationships will be used to create the best possible media partnerships for the Wisconsin Safe Voting Plan. So my understanding of this analysis, using data, people communicate in lots of different ways, and you're, you want to be sure that you cover all of those different ways. Would that be accurate, Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes, that's accurate. We know that to get people to make an action, usually we have to touch them maybe six times, and make sure that they receive, which is a different people receive messages in different ways. I know that some people, my father included, like to read the printed newspaper, some people get their information online, some people are in radio. We're just trying to put the net out there to get as many people and give them enough impressions that it will make them feel comfortable however they want to go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alder? And I should not blame civic clerk, I was under the wrong item, so I'm under the right item now, so I'm seeing names. Alder Vanderlyce, do you have questions for Mr. Hutchinson, or?
Not for Mr. Hutchinson's, no.
Okay.
But I would like to make a comment later, thank you.
You bet. I'll entertain a motion to close the.
I do have a question, Mr. Mayor, but I don't, I don't see a button.
Alder, where are you? Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. I do have a question in the proposal you had submitted to the city regarding direct mail. You have two potential postcards planned, but there is a sentence that states, knowing that one or both of the mailings could be scrubbed. Now, social media is great, you know, radio is obviously excellent, but social media really only is going to get, usually younger in the city, and direct mail would truly get everyone. I feel it's very important to make sure that both of those mail pieces, if not more, go out. Can you speak to that?
Yes, and the sentence that you're referring to just had to do with timing, because we know that printers and mail houses are pretty inundated right now, and depending on when we have the signed contract and we can go, just not sure that they're going to be able to get it done. So that was, that was the caveat there. We just have to make sure that we're able to get it in on time.
It looks like the first mailer would go out in maybe two, three weeks, I think, October 12th or 14th, something like that. Do you feel pretty confident with that timeframe? You'd get that out?
I'm confident that we can have it ready, but I have to reach out to the mailer, to the printer, and they can do it.
Appreciate, you know, the honest answer there. I just, I really feel that that's not just the direct mail. That'll truly reach everybody, you know, whereas the other ones are kind of certain markets. Thank you.
Understood, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hutchinson, yes, Alder LaFave?
If I got my thing on, doesn't know if I show up maybe for you. But I have a question for Mr. Hutchinson. I want to know, one of the criteria also would be, is looking low in voting, and that tends to be District 6, is one of the lowest voting districts I think we have in the city. Are you also looking at that?
We are looking to have the kickoff meeting with the city and groups that are involved to help educate us on where the need might be higher. So no, I don't have data on the lower voting areas in the city.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's Alder. Motion to close the floor?
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder LaFave. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay? The ayes have it. The floor is closed. Alder Vanderlyce?
Thank you, Mayor. My comment is that if this grant wasn't proposed, we wouldn't be having this conversation. I think that, you know, generally, you know, in the past, it's always been the, you know, the two parties that kind of, you know, get the word out on the voting and things. And I don't know how the city happens to be the, you know, the one that's, you know, kind of in the driver's seat to, you know, to get the word out on voting and things like that. And it seems like, you know, the people that send out the grant money, it's, they're trying to influence our voting, you know, right across the board, that we're just trying to take over, you know, what the two parties have been doing in the past. I don't know if that's really the job of the city of Green Bay, to be, you know, marketing and all the things that go into it. But I feel that, you know, the city's kind of, you know, jumping in on this. And without this grant, we wouldn't be doing any of this. And, you know, I thought we did a pretty good job on. And, uh, you know, I, I thought we did a pretty good job on, you know, the last election and things like that. And, and, you know, the, the media that, that's out there right now, as far as, you know, people to get out and vote and what have you. So I, I think that, you know, you know, they're, it's, it's trying to influence, you know, the overall, how, how it's being proposed, you know, uh, so that, you know, I feel that, you know, does the city want to get involved with this down long-term or what, what's the, what's the thoughts?
Thanks, Alder.
You, Mayor?
I think it's, I think it's important to note, just, you know, for informational purposes, that the council approved this grant already. This $150,000 was of that, you know, nearly 1.1 million that was already approved, but council didn't have, didn't raise any concerns when this grant was approved. So I think that's important to note. Alder Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions, um, and whoever on staff would like to, and who, who directs the messaging on this? Is it the city of Green Bay or is it, uh, the granting agency? Or, or perhaps maybe it's coming from the, the PR firm?
So the directing of the messaging comes from the city of Green Bay. We obviously have technical assistance from the Center for Tech and Civic Life. And we believe we have, we would like to give a contract with council approval to affirm that very well understands Wisconsin election law.
Okay. One of the things that, you know, I, I did a little bit of research on their mission and they seem to be very focused on technology, all things of that nature. Nowhere in their mission or the description of their nonprofit, if I found anything about outreach or, or PR related to elections, is this something new? Or maybe specifically you can answer, was, was this something that was a grant requirement or that, uh, that the city of Green Bay has, has put out there?
I'm sorry, when you say you researched them, to whom are you referring?
Oh, sorry, the, the granting organization.
So your question.
Their, their mission very specifically states technology advancements. They don't have voter outreach. So that's why I'm trying to figure out where the source of this is from, is if it's a grant requirement or if we are proposing this.
This was not, it is not a grant requirement. We proposed it. And the Center for Tech and Civic Life, they are, um, they, they marshal as many resources as the grantees require.
Okay. Okay. So one of the, appreciate that this was, um, was in the, was in the original grant application that we approved. But I think what, what wasn't particularly transparent at the time when we approved this is, um, a very vocal endorsement from members of our administration on partisan candidates. And so I do think it's a very fair question to ask if, um, you know, if, if this PR campaign is going to blanket all voters within our community or, or if they're, you know.
Alder, I, I do have to interrupt and say that I don't appreciate the implication.
It's not an implication. It's very explicit.
And so what's your allegation?
It, I, I'm asked, it's not an allegation. It's a question. What kind of assurances do the residents of our community have that we are going to attract all voters and not just those that have been publicly endorsed and for whom are campaigning?
That's a, that's an incredibly insulting question, first of all. Second of all, this effort will be strictly nonpartisan.
That's all I needed to hear. It was a question.
And it was an insult.
Information that was known.
It was an insulting one.
I disagree. I think it's an honest question that should be asked on behalf of the residents of our community.
Alder Dorf.
Thank you, Mayor. So as I know, many of you, of course, have been following along with what the work of the Elections Committee has done. I'm sure you've all been viewing the hours and hours of video that we have out there as part of our minutes. And I'm certain that all of you have seen that this was a request that came from the Elections Committee long ago, long, long ago, when we first started. We wanted to ensure that with the polling locations possibly changing, and they did, with the procedures possibly changing, and they have, getting additional drop boxes, all of this information needed to get out there. Our city staff is overwhelmed. The clerk's office has more work than they know what to do with. I've asked them and any other city employees to engage in this in as successful of a way as grant organizations. This idea is not a brand new idea. You have all approved this as you approved what Elections Committee has been doing. And I really suggest if you have not, that you go back and you view all of those meetings and you listen to what we have said and the things that we have been working on. Elections Committee was appointed by this council to ensure that we would have a successful November election. And I am one, goad blocks that appear to be being thrown up for I don't know what reasons. You know, exactly what people do not want to have information about voting? What groups are you so concerned about that might get extra information? I can imply some things too. So please, Alders, remember what you've already voted on, remember what you've already approved. And I wish we would quit throwing out specious accusations. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Gerlach.
Thank you. We are swimming in my water. You know, I have, I struggle with sewer pipes and tids and tiffs and all of those subjects. But now we are talking about something that brings together the two areas that I have focused my entire professional life on, and that is education and communication. So you probably aren't surprised to know that I read this proposal very carefully and really enjoyed reading it. And I would say in, in response to Alder Vanderlees. In a very precarious situation right now, and the outcome of our election is threatened because of the pandemic. As long as I have lived, I have never voted during a pandemic. This is, this is a different kind of beast that we're dealing with. As I said, this is my area of expertise. This is what I do, I mean, as a communications consultant, I do these very things, but on a much smaller basis. I don't have a, a team of 28 people. And as I read this, I was looking for things like have questions that have been brought up. I looked at all the samples and I said to myself about each one, is this unbiased? Is this nonpartisan? Is this truly education or is this some kind of influence? And I feel very comfortable that we have chosen here an organization that is not trying to peddle influence or change minds, but is trying to help people exercise their rights. The outcome of the election will be better, the more people are educated as to how they can participate. And I feel very impressed that this organization understands the, the, the really difficult timeframe we have here. We don't have a lot of time. I looked carefully at how they plan to address that. I looked at how comprehensive this program is. I think it's a very excellent proposal. I feel very confident as a communications professional that this is a good thing to do, and I really believe it will make our election results better if, if we define better election results as empowering as many citizens as possible with the right to exercise their democratic.
Thank you, Alder. Alder LeFave. Alder LeFave.
She's on mute.
Sorry, I was muted. Sorry. Sorry, Mayor. Um, I wanted to bring up that, for everybody, I was an SRD, a Special Registered Deputy through the state of Wisconsin. I took classes, hours I had to take to be certified. This was years ago. And then they took that right away from SRBs. And I went out, when I would register people, I found that's the most honest thing ever. People told me if they were not legally right to vote, no matter they were here illegally or if they were still a felon, did not go through their probation. I believe in the right of everybody. I didn't care who, I never asked if you were Democrat or Republican. This is so important, this item here. We, in a pandemic, and we're going to have the flu season, people are scared. Many of them will not want to go in person if it gets worse. So this is very important on this. And, um, I think that we need to put out whatever we can to get as many people out there voting. This is important. All, all elections are important. I've always told people, go and vote. So I, I'm going to prove this. We need this. This is important. Um, Alder Dorf and Alder Gerlach mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. And we've got a few people in the queue that have already spoken, a couple of people listed twice. So if you could just check that. Uh, it looks like Alder Burnett.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. A question for staff. Who will approve the final content that goes out, whether it be on Facebook, social media, other social media venues, print media? Who will approve the final messaging? Will it be this firm or will it be someone from the administration or the full city council or the Elections Ad-Hoc Committee? We need to figure that part out.
It will be staff.
What do you mean by staff?
We have an, we have an internal elections team, um, which is the clerk, the clerk's office, the, the clerk and the deputy clerk, um, uh, staff from IT, um, HR, law, myself. So there's about eight people on this internal team, uh, who would be looking at final product before it went out.
Will it be a vote of this eight-member staff? Like five people like it, three don't, three are concerned with this or that? Like, how will we know that this is completely non-biased, nonpartisan, uh, plan? What assurances does the public have that city resources will be, uh, used on a very nonpartisan manner?
It's the law, Alder.
It's the law?
It's the law, correct.
So, so what law are you referencing, Mayor? That's my point. I need to, I need, if we're going to approve.
What I'm saying is we're prohibited from engaging in any sort of electioneering with official resources, and obviously that will not be occurring.
Well, I beg to differ. I think we will be, as a city, engaging in electioneering by accepting this grant. So let me explain where I stand on this issue. I, I agree. Every single person who's eligible for, to vote should vote. I've said that from the very beginning. Local elections, state elections, every election that I participate in, as a kid or as a voter, I encourage full voter participation. I represent the 12th district, which is entirely on the Oneida Reservation. I encourage every single person on the Oneida Reservation to vote. They don't always vote in every election, and I encourage everyone to vote. I encourage every gender, every sexual orientation, every religion, every skin color, every nationality, every single person across every economic or demographic group, as long as they're eligible legally to vote, I encourage full voter participation. Groups turn up to vote all the time. Legal women voters, Rock the Vote, MTV, now the Green Bay Packers, celebrities, sports stars, you name it. We all can agree that everyone who is eligible to vote should vote. The question in the ethical dilemma we find ourselves in as a city is the Center for Tech and Civic Life is providing the funding for the city of Green Bay to have a public affairs campaign or public relations campaign to turn up the vote. We, they, that organization which send us, that, that gave us the grant money, received a $200 donation from the founder of Facebook and his wife. Two people donated $250 million, and they're encouraging targeted voter participation in municipalities all across the country, who in Green Bay, or Seinkin, Osho, Milwaukee, Madison, Phil- Philadelphia, go down the list. My point that I'm trying to make is, in very highly partisan times, where special interest groups and political parties and money and corporations are influencing our elections, how can we possibly, in good faith, accept money from an organization to run a public affairs campaign that received $250 million from a single party and their spouse? It's, uh, it opens up all kinds of ethical situations, and that's why I was hammering down on the analytics. Not that I, I don't believe that analytics could be used to target voters. That's things that political parties and special interest groups do. City of Green Bay should not be used as a conduit to accept money from a third-party organization to engage in this sort of activity. Now, let me ask you all this. Right now, the donor to this group, a Civic and Tech Life, Center for Tech and Civic Life, is Mark Zuckerberg. What happens in the next election if the, I know, I believe one of the gentleman passed away, but the Koch brothers or any other corporate entity or businessman? What happens at the next election that they're the ones that are giving this money? We cannot act, we cannot treat Green Bay as a conduit to accept outside money to target voters. Okay? Send, send flyers and postcards and, and media to everyone, letting them know, okay, we're in a pandemic, we've gone from 31 polling sites to 15 or 20 or whatever it is. These are the locations you go vote at. This is how you become a voter in the city of Green Bay. That's a program. And if you're saying that staff is going, and you say that it's the law, I think we need to know how exactly and who has the ultimate say in that. And Mayor, you were a little perturbed with Brian's Alder Johnson's point about, okay, if you're part of that staff discussion, you have, you have endorsed candidates in this race. So you should recuse yourself from that messaging. Sorry, that's just the way it is. I have not endorsed anyone. I can look unbiased at this. And my unbiased, nonpartisan, non-special interest influenced opinion is, this stinks. This has not passed the smell test. Realize what you're doing if we pass this. We can accept some of the messaging, remove some of this, make it about immunity, engagement, this is where you vote and whatnot. Be very clear about that. But if you say that this is a staff-level discussion, I'm uneasy with that. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any others?
Yep.
Alder, where are you? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Up till now, obviously, we've spent and focused the, the money we've received and thought it would be for election equipment. And then it's been, you know, God sent for that. Personal protection equipment, and that's also been, you know, excellent. Uh, extra funds for poll workers to pay them hazard pay, excellent again. And then we did some in-house mailers across the city that went out to everyone, you know? Those are all excellent things. We voted for this really, you know, before a lot of the, um, our nonpartisan mayor really became partisan, unfortunately. And now we saw a pretty nasty letter to our president, we saw endorsement of a Democrat candidate for, for President Joe Biden, as well as all, you know, different below-ticket items. So now, since that has occurred, uh, you know, we know from earlier discussions on this that you were involved in helping us get this grant, which is, is great for the mentions of the different things I mentioned. How can the citizens, I've been, been asked this now that you've kind of jumped in and kind of divided Green Bay at the city level, and we should talk about roads and parks and police and fire. How can the citizens of Green Bay be assured that these efforts really are not just paying special attention to certain voters? There's that great uneasiness, and it's very easy to see why, no matter how much you might want, want to recognize it. But as the other Alders mentioned, I'm also uneasy with, with some of this messaging that we might be doing. Look forward to it. Welcome people to vote, anybody, whatever, but when we're setting the target and when we see the forces behind it, where people lie, you can see why people are uneasy. Thanks.
Alder, scan.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would just like to say, first of all, that, uh, if the Koch brother wants to give money to, to any group to get out the vote, I don't see why we wouldn't take that. We're not beholden to them to anything. As far as I know from the Zuckerbergs, they, they have not taken any partisan. As far as I know from the Zuckerbergs, they have not taken any partisan position. Matter of fact, they've been taking heat for allowing some of their inappropriate lying posts of different parties and censuring them, or at least marking them as being false. So this is just, I, I, I realize there is a paranoid element out there in our politics. And I realize, but that doesn't mean we have to give into it. There's no evidence whatsoever that all we're, all we're doing is telling people the changes, informing people. I mean, it's been mentioned that there's now celebrities, they don't know our particular circumstances, our changes in our city. That's what we have to get out to the voters. And I think that's what we're doing here. There's no evidence we're doing anything else. None. And as far as, I keep hearing this letter, you know, from the mayor to, to our president. Well, when you have a president who, in his rallies, incites violence, that was an appropriate letter. There was nothing inappropriate in that letter. There was nothing-
Alder Scannell has the-
Yeah, but when you say something clearly off the rails, Randy, I'm calling you out.
Alder Scannell has the floor.
And he's off the rails.
Alder Scannell has the floor, Alder Weary.
That's a matter of fact, that this president has incited violence at his rallies. It's, plenty of video on it. That's a matter of fact. I'm not making a squirrelous accusation.
You are.
And that is what prompted the letter. I believe if there was a Democratic candidate or an independent candidate who did the same behavior, that our mayor should write them and say, that behavior is not acceptable. It was the behavior. There was no political message in that letter. No political message. It was a specific behavior that is well documented and saying not acceptable in our community. I think that's appropriate.
Point of order, I think we're talking about rant.
Alder Scannell, continue.
Is a rant for a while. Excuse him.
Well, I'm done with, well, I'm not the one who keeps bringing up this letter business, and it's just bull. So there's no evidence whatsoever that what we are doing here is playing partisan politics in any size, shape, or form. There are definite things that have changed within our city that is going to throw a lot of voters for loops. Voting procedures, voting places, we need to get that information out to as many people as possible. That's what we're doing here. There's absolutely zero evidence of anything else.
Mayor, if I may?
Where the money's coming from, we're doing what we want to do with it, and what we're doing is informing our constituents. If you can show me that we're doing something else, okay. But you can't. You're not. All you're doing is throwing up all kinds of suspicions. And I appreciate that those suspicions are out there in our community. But that doesn't mean we have to give into them. We don't have to get into that kind of paranoia. So I believe we're doing the right thing here. I believe in democracy more than I believe in any partisan politicking. We're reaching independents. I think we're going to be reaching Republicans. I think we're going to be reaching Democrats. We're going to be reaching everybody. And that's, for me, that's what democracy is all about. If, that's all that matters. So I support this, and I think, and I appreciate some other suspicions coming from their constituents, but I don't appreciate that you don't understand the law or what we're doing, and you can't address that yourselves. That's it.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. So Alder, to Alder Scannell's point, there are suspicions and paranoia. And so my objective with asking some of the questions that I did ask was, was to really kind of talk about the elephant in the room, get the public confirmation that we needed to get, which we received. So because of that, I feel satisfied. So my biggest thing is that I wanted to ensure that all residents in our community have access to this PR in an equitable way. And, and staff has confirmed that. I think the messaging needs to focus on how to vote in a pandemic. Obviously, there's a lot of things that have changed. We need to get that word out to the community. I think we need to do that. But I think we're also naive to believe that, that analytics hasn't been used in a way to influence elections. And so we've gotten that assurance from our staff that that will not be part of this campaign, and that's what I needed to hear. However, well, not however, but there is one thing that I would like to address. So KW2, HVS, high-quality organizations, you know, I, I looked into them, I researched them, I'm very confident in everything that they do. And one of the things that they suggested in their report was that they would, or their proposal was that they would provide a report that shows all of the, the outcomes of their campaigns. And so I would like to just offer up an amendment to the original motion, that that report be provided to the city council as a contingency of this approval in its entirety.
Second.
We have a motion to amend to reporting of outcomes to city council based on the work of KW2, HVS. Motion was made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Scannell. Discussion of that amendment?
Mr. Mayor, I have my button pushed.
Yes. On the amendment, Alder LeFave?
Yes. I think Alder Johnson, that's what I was going to bring up. I think it's very important that if there are misgivings, this be above board completely, that anybody has a right to weigh in on the decision. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. We do have a number of people in the queue. Alder Dorf on the amendment or on the item?
On the amendment, I just want clarification. Just what exactly, what exactly does that mean? After the work is all completed?
Yes.
Then, I'm just not clear what Alder Johnson wants.
Sure. Alder Dorf, it states in the proposal that when the work is completed, a report will be provided that shows, you know, all the ads they took out, I presume, you know?
Okay.
I don't, I guess the outcome of their work. And so all I'm asking, in the spirit of transparency, again, to calm some of those fears that the public does, that they've communicated to me, I think if, if we can be transparent with that outcome, I think that's a good thing. So that's why I'm requesting it.
So then, you wouldn't want the, to go to elections committee, the ad hoc committee first? Just-
Yeah. It, it could certainly go to the elections committee. I'm comfortable with that, as long as it makes its way to council.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You, Alder. Alder Galvin on the amendment?
Actually, on the amendment and also a little bit on the previous discussion. I think that's a good solution, Alder Johnson, to have a review by the election committee and by the full council as to what's going to be done here. I do somewhat resent some of the insinuations that have been made here about the partisan politics, especially if we were to look at other Alders' Facebook pages, it's, would be very obvious how some of them lean politically, and the comments they make are quite partisan on those Facebook pages. It allows us to have those opinions and to express them. And I, I just, I'm just a little shocked that people think that the city hall and this organization would be trying to influence voters to vote one way or another, when it's been pretty clear from everything that we've had, from the get-go of receiving this grant money and what it was intended for, that it was merely intended to improve the ability to vote in the city of Green Bay, inform all citizens of the city of Green Bay how to vote, how to register to vote, and some of the safety procedures, where to vote, and everything else. So I'm, I'm just, I'm a little disappointed, I guess, is, is probably the best way to put it, at the way some of this discussion has gone. And I certainly hope we can put this behind us and move forward for what's best for everyone in this community. Thank you.
Any other comments on the, on the amendment?
Mayor, I'd just like clarification, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
It is unclear to me exactly what's being asked for. The report is after the fact, not before the fact. So the campaign will happen, the outreach and education will happen throughout the entire month of October, right up to election day. And the report would be generated after. Is that what, is that what is being discussed here? Just to be clear.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, and I could restate the motion. If, you know, to Alder Dorf's point, if we refer this back to the special elections committee, which then in turn would approve, approve their, deny the report and forward it onto council. I, I think that process makes sense. And to further clarify, that is, that is the way that I understand it as well, that this would be after the fact, but still achieves the transparency that hopefully will put people at ease.
That sufficient, Ms. Jeffries?
Yes, it is, Mayor.
So we do have that amendment, which would require sort of a debrief or a report out by KW2, HVS to our ad hoc elections committee, and then, of course, onto council. Motion has been made and seconded. Any final discussion on that amendment? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 What was nay? The ayes have it. Item has been amended.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Gerlach, to award the contract as amended. Any final comments?
We use the board?
Yes, we can certainly use the board. All right, seeing none, we will go to the board.
Did it come up?
No, it did not, Alder Stoyer. Would you like to voice vote?
Alder, yes. And that motion is successful, nine to three. Onto petitions and communications. Any to be made?
Alder?
Mayor? Alder Galvin, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I think I might have just turned off civic clerk. But I do have a communication. This is for improvement in services. I'd like the city to investigate the cost savings of not collecting plastics or recycling and the merely collected as part of our regular garbage pickup.
Alder, any others?
Alder Vanarlees?
Go ahead, Alder.
Late communication to Traffic and Bicycle Protection Commission requests on behalf the area residents for a stop sign to be installed at the corner of Fawn Lane and Parkwood Drive. I'll forward that. I'll, I may let forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Any others?
Mayor, what was the vote on that? I was blocked out on that, on that vote.
It was nine to three.
Thank you.
Motion to refer.
Second.
Made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf, to refer those communications to the proper authority. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 What was nay? The ayes have it. Those have been referred. Adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We're adjourned.
Bye.